We also have some speakers or interested individuals joining the meeting by video or teleconference using the Zoom platform as published in our meeting notification. If you are in our Zoom audience, please keep your microphone muted. For those who are wanting to comment, please do call. For those joining us via the Zoom app or through your computer, please click on the raise hand button. For those joining us from calling feature, please press start line. This is Rowan Fire and Water, Mr. Andy Duster. Now we have a comment from one of our virtual attendees and he will let me know if he wants to speak or if you speak. Also, please state your name and address. He's joining to the meeting.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Commissioner Soski?
President.
Commissioner Wayden?
Yes.
Commissioner Cheney?
President.
Commissioner Sharp?
President.
Mayor Beck?
President. I apologize to the consent saving versus proof the next June sixteen twenty twenty five second. Secretary of State for the clients and approve this position of client secretary of June seventeen twenty twenty five. So I'll seven twenty five. We've watched, we need to watch both foreign and party. A section to allow pardon on the south console for other Tuesday, August nineteenth. And four to ten P M. Or approve the election application for Wolf electric. And approve fitness to approve or public works recommendation. Recommendation purchase of twenty twenty five Chevy fifteen hundred true grab. For a total of forty nine thousand seven hundred seventy four plus. So I mean, I have permission to like to go down for further discussion. This time I'm going to pass it off as an.
I'll say.
Commissioner Cheney?
Sharp?
Sharp.
Commissioner Cheney?
Yes.
Commissioner Wayden?
Yes.
Commissioner Soski?
Yes.
Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
Mayor Beck?
Yes.
On the appointments, appointments, I'll be bringing higher Roseanne to the library at North for appointment of R and D. Because serves couple of terms on the board and recently as the board president. But his eye affected first of July. We don't have record of her reappointment in twenty three. So this term we've covered four year terms. This term will be taken first of July twenty twenty seven. She has served as a service commissioner for.
Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
Commissioner Soski?
Yes.
Commissioner Cheney?
Yes.
Commissioner Wayden?
Yes.
Mayor Beck?
Yes.
Public hearing, first open public hearing on the one and six year.
Martin Stolow, construction facility manager, here to present the one and six year plan. The projects that we anticipate build in the next fiscal year. We listed on the one year plan of the future forecast of what we're trying to accomplish in the six year plan. So currently in the twenty twenty five twenty six, we're will be building out the fifth terrace project at Fifth Room. Completing the trail that leads to the softball complex with some grading, some grading and final seed in the fall. So currently hoping soon they were putting up signs today. So coming soon, we get some bottles put in place to keep the money that's coming across there until we do get some seed established. But coming soon. Obviously, the rest of the first, the one year plan is still subject to our budget. Maybe that we have here in July, but these are what we'd be targeting in that budget. It's also contingent on a six hundred thousand dollar grant that's only going to present a little later. So that project for the grant funds would be the fifth Corso from Eleventh Street to Nineteenth Street. Another project from Fourteenth Street. From central to first Corso, Fifteenth Street from central to first Corso and first Corso from Fourteenth to Fifteenth. That's kind of a smaller targeted project in case we have to kind of mingle things around contingent on some grant funds. And then also listed in the one year plans is when Good Life Ag does get started out there. It's in this fiscal year, if they also choose to pave that road. The traffic plan study that they did didn't really require that, but I was hearing some discussion that maybe they would want to pave it. So if they do, I would have to have a listed up a plan. And that would be a very split. So is there any questions on the one year?
What's going on with the transfer station?
The intent there is the project location, the site kind of changed a bit. And so they were contemplating on entering from the and coming out of the transfer station road into the east side. Well, the west side of the plant heading east and so that's listed on there. He's always paid, you know, just off of the scale so far. I think that was kind of one of the main drives that they would so choose to pay. But again, it's on there in case that they would. The traffic study did not dictate that it needed. Correct. So going up to the transfer station off of G Road or Twenty Third Avenue, whatever you want to call it. And then, you know, even as far over as Nineteenth Street on G Road. And part of that is counting. So it's just showing that corporate is on that one year plan. Coming off the highway, just past the road, the track is still counted. And so on the, on the six year plan, one of the main targets is always the intent street. Try to be looking for some future grant funds that maybe could get that built. And it's one of our main throw players that we would like to get fixed. Next bridge is up that needs some maintenance work with these six street bridges and third, third street bridge. And then some milling asphalt overlay on Ninth Street down by Eighth Corso to the railroad bridge down there. And then Central Avenue from Twelfth Street to Twenty Second Street. And then also Fourteenth Avenue in front, going east and west in front of the North Side School. So from Eleventh Street and back from the street, capital, milling that roadway and some of it out. So that would be what we're trying to accomplish in the one and six. Are there any questions?
Mayor pressure? Is T Street ever worth trying to piece out or is it marketable, tried to easily?
We would contemplate piecing it out and part of that is the L M I, the mode moderate income district. You know, on the southern half would remain qualified for some grant funds, but north of the tracks it wouldn't. So that's how we did six street. So that would be the test. At, you know, just get as far as you can. Thank you.
Anyone else present for live speaking favor of this president one six plan? President with live speaking opposition to the president one six plan? Would you like to speak in your? Commissioner Wayden?
Commissioner Cheney?
Yes.
Commissioner Soski?
Yes.
Mayor Beck?
Yes.
This time I'll open the public hearing to be grant funds in the amount of thirty thousand dollars for Nebraska City Museum Association.
Good evening, Dean of the South Stand Park Road, Brooklyn Nebraska City Museum Association. The opposed view and in front of you is a continuation of our resident admission program. It provides our funding for payable. Since the museum's been opened in response to receiving those funds, all Louisiana open a minimum amount of hours per year. And they provide free admission to all residents of Zipco six eight four one oh. It's about fourteen thousand or so folks in that area. They said this is a continuation from previous, I believe, sixteen years we've been doing this program. We've increased it a couple of times over the past year, a couple of years due to minimum wage increases in Nebraska. Currently it sits at thirty thousand, which would be five thousand dollars per museum. As we're looking at it right now, there will probably not be another increase for the next proposal in the foreseeable future. Even with the minimum wage increases. So we'll probably stick at thirty thousand for. I would mention those, those totals, by the way, are calculated off of the, the total amount of hours. The museums are open to higher ago since three hundred eighty eight hours at minimum wage plus a dollar twenty five. So to cover fees and insurance and taxes.
On the application being that thirty thousand two hundred pound entity actively contributing Nebraska museums itself?
Yes. Any other questions? Thank you for your.
Hello, I'm Lisa Walker with Nebraska City Area Economic Development Corporation. The Citizens Advisory Review Committee met on June seventeenth to discuss this request. And it is the group's decision that the city council grant the Nebraska City Museum Association the thirty thousand dollars that they're asking. However, the committee has also asked that the association provide the committee with more detailed documentation on the museums, such as attendance reports and any other relevant reports, as well as requesting the funds earlier first quarter of the year, first of waiting. I'm sorry.
Why did we end?
From my understanding, it should be, it should come in at the first of the year instead of the middle of the year. Any questions for me?
Anyone else present would like to speak in favor of the application for the thirty thousand dollars? Any person who likes to speak in opposition? This time I move that we close the public hearing, the usual funds of thirty thousand dollars for Nebraska City Museum Association. All second motion. Commissioner Soski?
Yes.
Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
Commissioner Wayden?
Yes.
Commissioner Cheney?
Yes.
Mayor Beck?
Yes.
I'm now open to having the jury do some work.
Sorry. Again, I'm Lisa Walker with Nebraska City Area Economic Development Corporation.
Starting the slideshow right now.
And of course, there's an error. We're going to ignore that. All right. So again, I am here to provide an update on the Nebraska City Economic Growth Fund. A program that was originally approved by Nebraska City voters back in two thousand and six. The fund was established for the goal of using local tax dollars to support and strengthen our community's economic foundation. The growth fund is designed to support existing businesses and industries, attract outside dollars through tourism, retain local jobs, and to recruit new businesses and industries to create additional employment opportunities. To, to achieve these goals, this fund offers loans, grants, and performance based forgivable loans. So these financial tools are available to entities actively working toward economic development in Nebraska City. The fund is administered by Nebraska City Area Economic Development Corporation. And anyone who chooses to apply for these funds, they can go to city hall to get an application. And then the Citizens Advisory Review Committee, which is appointed by the mayor, convenes to review the application. And then the committee makes their recommendation to city council, which then votes to approve or deny the request. And looking ahead every ten years, it does need to be reapproved by those in Nebraska City. And the vote will need to be done next year, twenty twenty six.
Real valid?
Yes. Yes, sir.
Valid, we have to be filed for July sometime in July.
Okay.
About a year from now?
Great. Thank you.
So this will be our third, tenth year?
Yes.
We got initial approval on sixteen from Illinois. So I remain.
As, as you can see, the committee is made up of Brenda, Brenda, excuse me, Alman, Lori Glover, Vaughn Hammond, Jim Coon, and Gina Stavis. And again, I'm Lisa Walker, the program administrator, and Lori Sickholz with N C A D C is our administrative assistant. Oh, I put a nice little picture of Lewis and Clark Visitor Center as they received a project funding in January this year. Currently, our understripped funds are six hundred and thirty three thousand, two hundred and fifty three dollars and twelve cents. You can see how the funding has changed, listed up there from fiscal year twenty nineteen. Currently, our outstanding loans, we have eleven businesses, but thirteen loans, the two of those businesses have two loans each. We've distributed thus, thus far this year, two grants. There are two pending, which one of them you will be voting on tonight. And the outstanding loan balance is one million, three hundred and fifty four thousand, three hundred and ninety one dollars and ninety nine cents. So as I mentioned, the, the one that you just heard for the Nebraska City Museum Association is for thirty thousand. And we have a committee meeting tomorrow for the O' County Housing Study, which is for Nebraska City Area Economic Development. Would be total of eleven thousand dollars. We will be bringing that to you in August.
We still have the menu restricted.
They've already, from my understanding, they've already taken the first six. And the four, up to four hundred is available to them after October of this year. And my side is messed up again. Any questions for me?
Are all the loans outstanding of the?
Yes, but we will have a conversation on some of them tomorrow. So we might have different information for you the next update.
Is there anybody present to the White's speaking in regards to the growth on person report? I move that the closed public hearing will be on, will be on the use of telephones. Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
Commissioner Wayden?
Yes.
Commissioner Cheney?
Yes.
Commissioner Soski?
Yes.
Mayor Beck?
Yes. At this time, the council will acknowledge receiving utility financial reports appearing in the April thirteenth twenty twenty five. And in the role of receiving utility from appearing, beginning May thirty first twenty twenty five. So this director asked the president's here? Questions on the? We now the new business side, I'm following discussion action regarding the car. First I will cover is the letter that we sent, we sent a draft between myself and the city attorney. We should have it moved to finish the week. We are continuing with meeting with Cardio. We met with them again today. It was only the local plant manager as the operations director. She got called away just before me. But it continues to be that they are continuing to monitor all of the chemicals. The biggest thing and another chemist, so when I say quant, quantitative ammonia. Abbreviated form saying what is still in some of the disinfectant is still in some of our current sludge is there. And they are trying to neutralize that as well as that new sludge from Skyler plant. We continue to break down once a week. Do some of those work of sludge from Skyler to help regrow biological agents in the anaerobic or tarp to the lagoon. They have recently pumped as much sludge as they can out of the tarp to lagoon. But they can't get to all of it without removing the tarp and moving the tarp would be very expensive as well as very, it would increase the smell of concern. They're still working on a long term plan with outside companies. Fixing it as a capital improvement. Again, that's the one. So as we look at the short term, I can use the term short because this biological, given the volume of the anaerobic lagoon, is going to take some time with their add neutralizers, every load that they put in, as well as chemically trying to do it. Unfortunately, as it comes out from under the tarp, it's not being producing the gas that's supposed to be produced because it's from the live biologicals. So when it comes out, there's still too much ash load in the aerobic side, which then creates the smell. N D did do a visit on June twenty fourth and the plant was in compliance with their, their partners. And that, that's all I have. I'm very interested in hearing if anybody thinks it's getting better, worse in a certain time period. Fully agree. N D does not come down there in person. So they don't come down at eight o'clock by or two or three in the morning. Yes, sir.
My name is Rick. Rick Schellmer. Sixteen oh five fifth Corso and as far as giving the council people. Picture of. This is in front of my building, an industrial road. And that is what's coming out of. I'm sorry, coming out of the manhole right in front of my building. And you can tell by the picture that's really caustic. It's actually rusting the manhole coats. That's running down the street. So I'm just wondering if we have to replace our sewer lines from out there. Is Cardio going to replace it or is that going to be taxpayer relief? Because it's very caustic and that's where the smell comes out, right in that area is out that manhole. So just your information for you guys.
Mr. Charlie, what is the location of this manhole?
It's twenty twelve industrial. And that's the one they were, that's the one they're actually monitoring until about five years ago. And they quit monitoring because Don passed away. He was working for utilities then.
I believe our monitoring station that pulls out baby samples is closer to Cardio.
This is all the way down industrial road. He did every manhole cover.
Anybody else present for white's speak? Or ask questions?
Uh, Dwight Stewart, Nebraska City twenty four oh one Corso. Um, you mentioned the June twenty fourth N D report. Is that possible that can be published for public to view that?
If it's N D E E S, all of the reports are online. So if it should be there, I can, I can check that June twenty fourth report.
Um, with regards to the, the draft letter that you're working on, on Cardio. Can you give us a flavor of what that letter, is it going to be a quoting a violation of the city ordinance or? Can you kind of give a preliminary?
I believe there was a direct quote to the ordinance, but the, the smell is, is the reason.
Yeah. One of the things we talked about last meeting was based off the definition of the ordinance. It's very clear that Cardio is violating the city ordinance. My understanding last meeting was whether this committee was going to issue a letter to Cardio citing the city ordinance violation. I get the impression that that's not the draft of this letter or?
I read the letter about a week ago. I don't remember that we specifically had the ordinance in there, but it would be easy to fit it there. I can guarantee you they know that they're bothered and bothered.
Well, I'm, I'm just, I think the documentation of it obviously is very important, right? So I, I recommend that that be included in that, in that actual city ordinance. Just one other thing I want to discuss is, I was talking to a couple that lives in the, I'm going to call it the Wildwood. Area and they recently sold their house or are moving. And I was talking to the individuals and they mentioned that they put together a pros and cons list. And on the con list was Cardio's smell. They had a lot of factors weighing in their decision, but it impacted their, part of their decision for moving. And I asked them to please just come to the meeting and just express your, you know, your voice, your opinion, let your voice be heard. And like most other people, you know, they're busy, they got lives, they got jobs, they got other things to do. So they, you know, they didn't want to like to come to the meeting. But I can tell you that there is a lot of silent voices out there that are not heard. And I think it's disappointing that people like that don't come to these meetings, express their, their voice. There is a silent voice out there with this issue, so. And last thing with the, with the manhole rusting, that is, that's concerning and what that's doing with the, the utilities in general, right? If it's obviously a work that's damaged on the manhole, is that what they're saying? Look, the utilities are suffering. And that's going to be on the taxpayers, most likely to resolve any collateral damage from this issue.
Dean General at five oh seven Terra Oaks Drive. Just a couple of issues that I didn't make a trip to Columbus and Skyler. And there, I absolutely smelled nothing from either of those plants. I will admit the wind was blowing pretty hard on that day that I was out there, but I did not smell a thing. So we do have, definitely as we all know, we do have the problem here. Another thing that I was, Mayor Beck asked to, is it better, is it worse? My own feeling it is better than it was, but I, again, probably last night and a couple nights ago. I shut the bathroom doors to keep from coming in my exhaust vents because it's definitely getting in the house yet. And I also heard the report of not detrimental to our health. But in, on, on your June sixteenth, I believe, P M A radio interview, morning line. Just for the records, it was incorrectly stated. I probably did not base it exactly right. But the gentleman that went through the five hangar chiefs, wet his hangar chiefs. I wet my hangar chiefs by blowing my nose along with multiple tissues. So I have to agree or disagree that, and say that this is detrimental to our, our health. And I guess that is. And, uh, I guess, uh, that is about all I have to be glations for me. Thank you.
Another question, but to your point about smells, I know that, obviously, they're very dependent on weather, like certain higher winds, possibly in Columbus or Skylar. It's higher winds especially because things move south. We will get smell off of the mains, off of, off of like wastewater mains, if we're not getting mostly off it, or moving to the lagoon. But you can't also increase in times because they have a daily wash, a weekly wash, and a monthly wash. So those times put more or less parts per million and all that, so. There may, maybe times it's not heavy, but it could be whether they want a heavier disinfectant or wash.
Thank you. Um, one other question. Has, if any, any, any discussion adds to what they plan to do on the long term? Is it new lagoons, or?
I don't know that. They've got three companies involved in different designs for what to do long term. But they're still committed to once they decide, figure out what that project looks like, if they're going to have an employment requirement, hoping in some kind of a town hall format.
Okay, thank you.
Brenda Ostis, two one one five Second Corso, and I have been one of the silent ones that Dwayne referenced earlier, and not silent anymore. I'm here to express my concern with others as well. Um, and I heard you say it's going to be very expensive, expense is part of the cost of doing business. The town should not be the ones to bear the expensive, horrible odors and not even wanting to be their own home. That's their cost of doing business. There's no reason why, if those lagoons are properly managed, that the odor can be controlled. Thank you.
One thing I forgot to bring up is that, you know, if these lagoons are working everything, how come this caustic stuff is going down the sewer line? That is what is supposed to be planned for. It's supposed to use up most of that caustic methane gas and that. So something's wrong. Why is it going down the sewer? Just a question on that same.
Well, if they're, if everything's operating, then we're back to like prior to five years ago, when there is less, there's less parts per million of anything that's coming through the system because they're biological lagoons, you know, what they're supposed to be taking out the ash load.
So when, once they get them working, if they get them working correctly, we won't have that problem?
We believe so.
Jennifer Howard, eight one three, Polaris Circle. Um, since you all are on the city council, my assumption is you all live in Nebraska City, correct? Do you smell Cargill at your house?
I'm on the park, the northern park. I don't often smell it, but I spend a lot of time on a lot of areas, for as much time as I can, I guess.
You smell it, you smell it in your home. Does anyone shake their head? Since the last city council meeting, we've smelled it in our home ten times. I know it's frustrating to smell it outside when you're trying to do things outside, but the frustration level when you smell it in your home, I can't even begin to speak. Ten times since the last city council meeting. I don't feel like the smell has gotten any better. In fact, it has gotten worse. On the twenty-seventh of June, we knew we were going to smell in our house because we were coming from the Omaha area off of Highway seventy-five and smelled it three miles outside of town. So we knew for sure we were going to smell it in our house. We wake up with headaches, nausea. You can't get away from it when it's in your house. And I too, like Brenda, have been the silent majority, and I'm tired of being silent because it's affecting my way of life.
Can you tell me, is there a day or a time that you remember sticks out through those very bad times that it was very problematic? Does it seem to be a certain time that?
There really is no rhyme or reason that typically when we smell it in our house, it's late afternoon through the next morning. But as far as day of the week, there is no rhyme or reason. Thank you for the opinion adopted.
John Martin, one one four, Fifth U Circle. Just in relationship to a comment there about, can you smell the odor in other parts of the town? Well, I can definitely answer that, yes. I have occasion to be at the Ambassador Care Facility, and I haven't worn one since, uh, smelled the odor that far north. So I think the lawyers in town are being impacted, like I said before, they're still on. A large amount of people are silent on the issue. Thank you.
Um, just, just a quick follow-up again, Dwayne Stewart. Um, we've had multiple meetings so far, and Cargill has yet to be present at any of these meetings. Has Cargill been officially requested to be at any of these meetings?
We've asked them to meet, each Monday meeting if they were to move.
Is there a reason why they say no? I mean, other than the obvious that they know they're going to be for eligible people? I guess, again, I would recommend that for each meeting, uh, the council extend an invitation to Cargill. And again, I think it's important that that invitation somehow be documented. This, this needs to be an evidence trail that Cargill is being resistant to attend these meetings. And as a citizen, I would like to see that documentation. I, I think that's important. We're getting to the point now where we've been kind of talking, conversing nicely, but I think we're getting beyond that point where we need to start showing evidence and documentation and a paper trail for a lot of, a lot of these communications that are going on currently. I think that's for the better, best interest of the community, the citizens, and our infrastructure. Thank you. As common, a follow-up, it's been three speakers.
Tim Martin, twenty thirteen Central Avenue, Nebraska City, Nebraska. My update, it's getting worse, um, at our house. Um, it's really bad when it rains and you got the wind. This last Fourth of July, I'd rather smell the fireworks than this Cargill smell. But that was one of my main concerns. And now we are experiencing mosquitoes with this whole thing. And my bug light can't even keep up with it. And so these mosquitoes, when we open up the door to let the dog in or out, they're coming in the house. It is getting them. So I'm starting to feel that some of these people are not getting heard, and some of these people that are coming to the meetings probably ain't feeling they're getting heard. I don't know. I'm not speaking for anybody. But that's it for now. Thank you.
Unfortunately, there is not a quick fix. Their short-term solution is not going to be days, weeks. The repopulating of biological agents is going to take time. When you look, especially with the volume of the anaerobic lagoon, two semi-loads a week is going to start chipping away at it. Hopefully, the neutralizers will work, and it will get up running sooner rather than later, but it's not going to be a matter of weeks or months. Anybody else? Is there someone who you'd say would wish they moved to? Thank you all for your comments. Next time in the re-business.
Resolution twenty-nine ninety-two five, on the one and six year Street Improvement. Resolution twenty-nine ninety-two five, whereas the city streets have presented, the district have presented a one and six year plan for the street improvement program for the city of Nebraska City. Whereas the public media was helping seventh day of July, twenty twenty-five to present this plan, and there were no objections to set plan. Therefore, be a result by the mayor and city council of the city of Nebraska City, Nebraska. Uh, the plans and data is furnished here by, and all things accepted and adopted. I motion to set resolution two nine nine zero dash twenty-five on the one and six year Street Improvement.
Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
Commissioner Soski?
Yes.
Commissioner Weyland?
Yes.
Commissioner Jean?
Yes.
Mayor Biden?
Yes.
This time it would be resolution twenty-nine ninety-one twenty-five to use growth funds in a amount of thirty thousand dollars for Nebraska City. Resolution twenty-nine ninety-one dash twenty-five to use funds from the Nebraska City Growth Fund in accordance with the city of Nebraska City Economic Development Plan. Whereas the city of Nebraska City has received growth funds through the city of Nebraska City Economic Development Plan created pursuant to the local office of municipal development act of eight forty. And whereas growth funds for economic development are allowed to be used for making funding awards to multiple businesses in accordance with the city of Nebraska City Economic Development Plan Program and governing regulations. And whereas the Citizens Advisory Review Committee and Program Director have recommended approval of grant application by the Nebraska City Museum Association, any amount of thirty thousand dollars shot through the Nebraska City Economic Development Plan. Whereas the city council of Nebraska City conducted a public hearing among the proposed years of growth funds, and therefore be a result that the city council of Nebraska City, uh, the application of growth funds is approved as applied through a maximum amount of thirty thousand dollars in grant funding to assist in covering expenses related to the Nebraska City Museum's resident admission program. The mayor is hereby authorized to execute all necessary appropriate documents on behalf of the city and the city of Nebraska City Economic Development Program to complete the project. Funding for the Nebraska City Museum's building admission program contingent upon approval of the senior attorney has to inform. My motion to approve resolution twenty-nine ninety-one dash two five to use growth funds in the amount of thirty thousand dollars from Nebraska City Museum Association.
All set.
Motion second for a discussion.
Commissioner Jean?
Yes.
Commissioner Soski?
Yes.
Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
Commissioner Weyland?
Yes.
Mayor Biden?
Yes. I am evicting discussions last action to approve a permanent waiver from using ATVs, ATVs, golf carts during the Applejack car show event by the River City Classic Car Club, organ organizers on September fourth.
Um, the last city council meeting, um, June sixteen, the, uh, city council, the River City Classic Car Club was approved to use central items for the car show during the Applejack event. And, uh, we also discussed and approved, uh, permitting the ordinance, allowing the, uh, golf carts. And it was discussed that perhaps there would be a special waiver that could be allowed, uh, for special events for, uh, those event days, whether the citywide ATV, UTV ordinance would be waived or the event organizers could be granted an exception, uh, whether we don't have to see ATV, UTV permanent, especially if we're out of town coming to Nebraska City and organizing for the parade or, or car shows, for example. So this is a request from the, um, regarding allowing the waiver of the ATV license over the behalf of that car show. So whether you want to, as a council, waive that citywide or for the event organizers, that's entirely up to you.
And I do want to add that it was in the request last week, they asked to be at the show. We also had the agenda request to waive the units, and we had, we just caught it, and then we had the lines, so we approved it technically, but then they caught it. I'll be attention to have that approved on discussion, so that's why we're bringing it back.
So I'm taking a waiver, waiving the registration, so they don't have to make a hold registration. Having to have it, plowing for registration, any, any registration, and this will be for car members.
And Larry, you can come up and talk to the chairman. While you speak on, on the Apple Club as well, but I believe all the members that are interested in this waiver are not.
Yes, I'm Larry Stevenson, uh, I'm the treasurer of the River City Classic Car Club. And the only thing we need, uh, the, well, we got two gators and one valve cart. And all we really use them for is in case we have to take something down to Sixth Street and we go down the alleys. We don't try to go down the main street or anything because of the traffic and everything. Uh, mainly, like I said, it's just to, if we have to get stuff down to the other end, that, and stuff, so.
So, so does it turn down when they beat it?
Yeah, that's the main thing, to turn it down and putting stuff up and during the morning. But it will not, we will not use it on any of the main streets or anything like that. Central Avenue would be the only street that we'd be using.
Or the alleys to the?
Well, the alleys.
Especially once the crowds get?
Right, yeah.
Does that mean when you, you were having a lot of access to participants as well, or?
I don't know. It was, well, I mean, because right now the ordinance raises, like, participants like in a parade are able to be excluded, or is it a parade? So we didn't really, I don't remember if we changed the permission of the description of now, so it was, so we just kind of left it as if somebody wanted to ask for a waiver, then you just come discuss the situation and not really tear into the ordinance specifically, so. I think the extent of the, you know, to use the alleys maybe for Corso. Yeah, it just, it depends on if it's just something that needs to be addressed, but for the most part, it's a terrible shutdown in the morning.
Most of it is between, well, First Corso and where the DJ is right there in the way. That's where we're going most of the time, taking stuff back and forth, so.
I just wanted to, the current one will say waiver, so we're waiving that they have to register them at all. They don't have to meet the equipment requirements, so this is, of course, a terrible. And also waiting that they can drive along Central, obviously, that's what we.
This is a long specific use of operating car shows.
Well, members only not getting any.
You're not really talking about a citywide, you know, you're talking pretty specific areas here, right?
Yeah, yeah. Central Avenue from Sixth Street to Eleventh Street.
Yes. And I believe they're all trailer into, I think.
Yeah, yes, they are. Andy, any questions for me?
Uh, what kind of things?
Okay, thank you.
I'm having a great show.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve a waiver for the use of UTVs, ATV golf carts during the Applejack car show. Development of River City Classics Car Club organizers on September twenty-first, twenty twenty-five. I'm hearing, of course, it's exciting like we want a more or less a perpetual waiver from what it sounded. But also that it could be a restricted area.
I don't know if it touches.
Yeah.
If we just, if we remember next year, we request the street.
So what do we want to call that, that the annual, read up on that?
I think that you should, yeah, so after the.
Okay, so we're looking for an annual application and limited to the area of the.
Motion second for re-discussion. Re-discussions. Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
Commissioner Wayland?
What's his name?
Commissioner. Commissioner Jean?
Yes.
Commissioner Soski?
Yes.
Mayor Beck?
Yes.
This time I introduce ordinance thirty-one twenty-eight dash twenty-five. Ordinance thirty-one twenty-eight dash twenty-five and ordinance to repeal section twenty-six through twenty-three, twenty-six through twenty-four, and twenty-six through twenty-five of chapter twenty-three. Article two of Dakota City, Nebraska City, Nebraska, related to federal's permanent fees and bonds. Repealing all other ordinances and parts of ordinances in conflict with this ordinance. Proving publication and form and declaring ineffective.
The reason for asking subpar address twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, plus section. Which is the, which is the chapter twenty-six, chapter twenty-three. So that's where it should be. An ordinance to repeal sections twenty-six, twenty-three, twenty-six, twenty-four, and twenty-six, twenty-five of chapter twenty-three. I move that this statute or rule required renewal three different days basis.
I'll second.
Commissioner Jean?
Yes.
Commissioner Wayland?
Yes.
Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
Commissioner Soski?
Yes.
Mayor Beck?
Yes, according to motion adopted by ordinance board council, this statute or rule suspend consideration of the ordinance.
Ordinance number thirty-one twenty-eight dash twenty-five and ordinance to repeal sections twenty-six dash twenty-three, twenty-six dash twenty-four, and twenty-six dash twenty-five of chapter twenty-six. Article two of Dakota City, Nebraska City, Nebraska, related to federal's permanent fees and bonds. Repealing all other ordinances and parts of ordinances in conflict with this ordinance, proving publication and form and declaring ineffective.
I move the final passage of the ordinance thirty-one twenty-eight. Second. Discussion. Chapter twenty-three is waiting to be, chapter twenty-four, twenty-five, to be posted to the long. Senior attorney guilty. All three of those could be. No problem, it's about interstate commerce. Any further discussion?
I ask shall ordinance thirty-one twenty-eight dash twenty-five be passed.
Commissioner Soski?
Yes.
Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
Commissioner Jean?
Yes.
Commissioner Wayland?
Yes.
Mayor Beck?
Yes.
I confirm ordinance thirty-one twenty-eight dash twenty-five adopted and shall sign at the same presence of the board of directors. Act seventeen, discussion size action approved for work on work condition of electrical system. Too many two hundred thousand dollars with total share of one million four hundred nineteen thousand seven hundred eight dollars and improved share of seven hundred eighty dollars, two hundred and two dollars.
Good evening, Stewart Abbott, Nebraska Utilities Operations Superintendent. So we're awarded this grant through the MDE for the bridge residency grant. It is to replace aging switch here at sub nine two, which is located at seventeen eleven investor road that's on by a waiver. It's the notepad building outside of the substation which houses the fifteen KV switch here. It's got fourteen bays in it currently. That was constructed in nineteen sixty-five. And we're finding that, I'm sorry, half of it was sixty-five, the other half was eighty-four, I believe. So it's two different pieces in one building, but all the, all the equipment in there is outdated. Anytime we take it out of service for maintenance or finding more pieces broken, which is getting to be obsolete parts, so. The byproducts grant to get that replaced to include new protective relays and incorporate skate system controls in that building as well, which it does not have full skate in there. The build time on the equipment is estimated to be two years. The grant performance period is five years. So we're estimating that this project will take between three and four years. Pretty, pretty valuable piece of infrastructure. This feeds everything on South Eleven Street from Eleven Porches South all the way to the bypass. American meter feeds water tower substations, toll strip substation, south side substation, which is the largest kind of residential restaurant station. So federal share one point four, city share seven hundred eighty thousand. Any questions for me?
Was the seven eighty here, Stuart?
It is a budget project, yes, we actually budgeted the whole amount of the project.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve the Board of Public Works' recommendation to upgrade the electrical system, the amount of two million, two hundred thousand dollars. With the federal share of one million four hundred nineteen thousand seven hundred and eight dollars and the NCU share of seven hundred and eighty thousand two hundred and ninety-two dollars.
Motion second for re-discussion.
Stuart, there is any fear the federal government will discontinue funding, it's not part of the whole.
It was quite the delight to actually get it ordered. This, this project started about fourteen months ago. And once the new administration took over, there was about a six-month period where the VLE was getting approval to the state. So I think at this time, we're, we're in good shape.
Commissioner Wayland?
Yes.
Commissioner Jean?
Yes.
Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
Commissioner Soski?
Yes.
Mayor Beck?
Yes.
Act eighteen, discussion size action approved for Public Works' recommendation. Electrical order five twenty-two, feed a new subdivision in Nebraska in the amount of one hundred thousand thirty dollars and ninety-six cents. With fifty-four thousand eight hundred dollars, sixty-eight cents as the customer share. And forty-five thousand two hundred twenty-seven dollars in instances, he's ownership.
Logan Grump, Nebraska Utilities Electrical Superintendent, development, just started breaking ground on here last month. There's six duplexes, six three complexes, and one super building. Any questions for me?
Can you cover all of them? I have been, where the electrical, electric, we cover all of them.
I'll make a motion to approve the Board of Public Works' recommendation of electrical order five twenty-two. To feed a new subdivision in Bennett, Nebraska, in the amount of one hundred thousand thirty dollars and ninety-six cents. With fifty-four thousand eight hundred and three dollars and sixty-eight cents as the customer share. And forty-five thousand two hundred twenty-seven dollars and twenty-eight cents as the NCU share.
I'll second question. Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
Commissioner Wayland?
Yes.
Commissioner Jean?
Yes.
Commissioner Soski?
Yes.
Mayor Beck?
Yes.
Next will be the discussion size action approved for Public Works. I see two recommendations to approve two resolutions being passed, change the leadership of utilities.
Resolution twenty-nine ninety-two dash twenty-five, appointment to meeting board directors. Director to meeting board directors, and this is to certify that on July seventh, twenty twenty-five, in the city of Nebraska City, state of Nebraska. I do appoint John Boar to serve as director to represent the city of Nebraska, the city of Nebraska. On the board of directors of municipal energy agency of Nebraska. The appointment will run until his successor is appointed with all of the powers and duties incident to such office. And a certification is issued in compliance with the Municipal Cooperative Financing Act contained in the Nebraska revised statutes eighteen dash twenty-four oh one. Upon the adoption of an ordinance of or passage of a resolution as provided in this section, the mayor, in the case of this city, the chairperson. Or the board of trustees, in the case of the building, toward the chairperson of the governing body of each of the proposed participating municipalities, the people of their respective governing bodies. Shall appoint a director, alternate director to meeting board of directors. This is to certify that on July seventh, twenty twenty-five, in the city of Nebraska City, state of Nebraska. I do appoint Stuart Abbott to serve as alternate director to represent the city of Nebraska City. On the board of directors of the municipal energy agency of Nebraska. The appointment will run until his successor is appointed with all of the powers and duties incidents in such office. This certificate is issued in compliance with the municipal cooperative financing act contained in the Nebraska revised statutes eighteen dash twenty-four oh one. Resolution twenty-nine ninety-three dash twenty-five, director, appointment form for public power generation agency. I asserted, I hereby certify as an authorized representative of the city of Nebraska, city of Nebraska. A member, a member of public power agency, generation agency, PPTA. As a member, adopt it and following resolution out of meeting of the governing body of said member. And that such resolution constitutes the binding action of the member. Whereas pursuant to section three dash zero two of PPTA bylaws. The member has heretofore designated following individual as its director, John Boar, utilities general manager. Whereas the member desires that the following persons be authorized to appoint. And alternative directors should serve in the event, the named director is not available to participate in any actions to be taken by PPTA. And therefore be a result that the director or one of the following members of the board of public works of the member. Be and hereby are authorized by member to appoint an alternate director to PPTA. Such appointment to be conditioned upon the approval of the public works commissioner of the member. Such appointment shall be made on behalf of the member according to the terms and provisions of section three point zero two of the bylaws of PPTA. The chair title would be the chairman of board of public works, titled secretary of board of public works. Be it further resolved, the powers and authorities granted by this resolution shall continue in full force and effect until written notice is given. To the assistant secretary treasurer of PPTA. On the cancellation of or modification thereof, pursuant to bylaws of PPTA, this resolution shall be effective on delivery of this form to the assistant secretary treasurer of PPTA. I further certify that the foregoing is a form of pericotid of the resolution as it appears on the books of the member. And said resolution has not been rescinded, modified, or amended, and is now in full force and effect.
I'll make a motion to approve the Board of Public Works' recommendation to approve resolution twenty-nine ninety-two dash twenty-five. To appoint John Boar as a director for the public power generation agency. And resolution twenty-nine ninety-three dash twenty-five to appoint John Boar as a director to municipal energy agency of Nebraska board of directors. And Stuart Abbott as alternate director to the municipal energy agency of Nebraska board of directors.
I'll second. Further discussion. Motion reading letter backwards. Section two-nine-nine-three is for the PPTA, two-nine-nine-three is for the. We just want your own backwards. Any further discussion? Commissioner Jean?
Yes.
Commissioner Wayland?
Yes.
Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
Commissioner Soski?
Yes.
Mayor Beck?
Yes.
Act twenty, discussion size action approved for Board of Public Works' recommendation to approve interwocal agreement with the city of Fall City, Nebraska. For share of electricity generated in equipment parts in the amount of sixty-five thousand dollars.
Hello, John Boar, Nebraska City Utilities General Manager. This is an interwocal agreement like we've had in the past with cities like David City, Auburn Street. There's not many electric cars that still work and run. There was a place down in Belleville, they decided to no longer maintain their engine, so there's extra engine parts. Fall City uses a similar, uses similar engines as us, and so we purchase this together. Whoever has something great first has the rights to that part, and then reimburse the other for the price of that part. And that's kind of how this has worked before with the other communities. There's always a chance that none of these parts will be used, there's a chance that all of them will be used. But with the aging, our engines are aging, it's hard to find parts, and so this is a great opportunity. this is a great opportunity.
And it has utilities ties to the government store, it takes two years, fifty, fifty square feet.
Amen.
Okay, um, I make a motion to approve, to approve the Board of Public Works' recommendation to approve entering into an interlocal agreement with the city of Fall City, Nebraska, for shared electricity generating equipment parts in the amount of sixty-five thousand dollars.
Motion, second, further discussion? Commissioner Weyland?
Yes.
Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
Commissioner Cheney?
Yes.
Commissioner Soski?
Yes.
Mayor Beck?
Yes.
Item twenty-one, discussion slash action regarding bids for providing IT services for city staff computers and electronics. So this is one where, uh, we formerly had, uh, an agreement with Spiral, and, um, Spiral was bought out by Ben, Ben, which simply did not buy that boat and business for the act of certain proportion. Uh, so we have been without an IT service agreement. And for servicing networking issues or computer security viruses or the like, um, so it can be very costly to get this set to be addressed with different businesses and talents. Uh, so we have Commissioner Cheney and I put together the, the bids for the different services. We looked at a piece of commercial bids, uh, one from Prime Security, one from Tab Media Technologies, uh, and those, we would, uh, put those in the agenda packet as far as the details, uh, providing services per device. Um, we looked at companies that would have the potential to scale up, so that, uh, we could start out with our first, foremost need to have a computer service, IT service. Um, and then eventually, if, um, we sell that, we would pivot into, um, secondary, tertiary phases and go with cameras and phones and emails, uh, and these companies will provide those services. Uh, we also did from the interlocal agreement with the county. Um, and that one is perhaps the most, um, different, and then there's another, uh, retail service provider, uh, it would be an interlocal agreement with Otto County. Uh, we have a lot of communication similarities between the police department and the county, so we do a lot with them already, but, um... Yes, um, so Action Tech has the, uh, IT service agreement for the police department, and that will remain in place, and this would be for city staff computers only, so this would exclude the customer, uh, facing computers, uh, say for the library computer lab, for example, um, and service in place. Uh, for those, so this would be for staff computers across the city, uh, police department, city hall, fire, EMS, health, road shop, we have the city staff producing computers, and the library, uh, city, the library staff computers would be serviced under this as well. So what I'm hoping for is direction from the city council of whether to, uh, take the, the bid from either Prime Security or Nine Technologies, or the interlocal agreement with Otto County, uh, in that direction. Um, it would be, and I have provided the service agreements and the bids from all three of them in the agenda packet. Uh, but it would be nice to have a direction as far as which path to take from this thing.
Are there any questions about?
Why would the interlocal, it would be kind of based on computer and user support, and anything on the rest of the list would use a kind of like a line or contract back forth, what we need done, what they save the cost of, and we agree on that. So this would be providing, uh, technical support, IT services for, uh, on a per-device basis, twenty dollars in one, in our local agreement with the county. Um, approximately close to be around thirty-eight devices. Uh, and if there are any other additional services, say for example, we needed to replace all the state computers in city hall, and we were contacted by county to say, okay, this is a special project, we have, uh, quote, on these hourly rates, or, I mean, um, setting up these new computers, or, um, getting this network functional for us.
I know a lot about phones. Phones, wait.
Our phones across the city are, so our phones would be outside of this IT services agreement with Otto County. What we're looking for on this one is computers for, uh, the computers of the ambulances, fire trucks, city hall, city computer devices, tablets, and that. Um, but eventually down the road, it potentially could lead to, uh, IT support for campus phones, email addresses, other additional services. So it's available for all three, all three options, uh, have the capability of scaling up. No device, it would be, it would offer you the service. And mayor, with your question of phones, that was one of the services that I pinpointed at over fire, so they still be of service for this, this system of city. Our phone system is currently serviced, uh, at any point at city hall. Uh, cemetery has spectrum, uh, this predepartmental, I believe, has...
It's streaming?
It's streaming. So we're, our phone system is a complete, uh, different business.
Who covers the service? Major service?
Literally, literally, that has, so.
When did the, so we're not paying four hundred dollars a month to start off any work?
You know that, same label, and it's hard to, well, have like pinpoint.
So that's been several years. Is that still in that budget? Do you start to feel you're, you're taking out the budget? So right now, we'd have to budget for seven sixteen.
Interlocal greater than the outside. Staff recognition is totally in.
In perfection and all that, because we don't really have service, where anything we have is even on the cloud, it'll be on the desk.
So, so there is a, a system that acts as a server, but it's a little bit, they're incredibly expensive. So the city, they have these super box, they have a pool of space, so that would be one of the things that we look at, whether you, in one of your projects. There's a lot of services that the city adds, they just don't use, that are available, we pay for them. I think that's just some of the direction that, the, that we lack in some of our departments, is like what we have, what we need, what we're already paying for, and how best to use it already.
That's right, after data protection and all that, we have, we have fireworks.
Here.
Forgive my ignorance, but protecting the city, because there has been cities and villages in Nebraska that have got the rates on one of the screen that would fall under this, or that is set.
So we would, so we have, the city has cybersecurity insurance, so with, along with cybersecurity insurance, there should be clauses in that to work with cities when those type of incidents happen. We did, uh, we're just actually from last week, implemented some of the cybersecurity grants that I wrote for the city last year, so we updated, kind of working on finishing that upgrade of firewalls and some switches, uh, to help with that, whereas before, there were no, there was no protection for that. So it, it, what makes it work so well for the city government from what the county does is very similar data, it's very similar system. We get, uh, and that's why you'll know some of the pricing that are, were quite a few things to go with, in the commercial ones, is because we have a lot of special programs that we are provided with certain, uh, cybersecurity protection with, and some other licensing that, uh, in a commercial environment, Project Three to five times, and they're geared towards government data, and how they know how traffic goes. So it, uh, that's a really big bonus for the city actually, working with them, as those are still available, and some of the current agencies have been, uh, funding, losing some funding, and we were guaranteed that this at least lasts out for another year for sure, and they're not saying it's going to go away, but there is guaranteeing us another year of funding for services.
Okay, I propose to approve, uh, entering into a major local agreement with the county providing IT services for city staff.
Right.
Motion, second, further discussion? Commissioner Soski?
Yes.
Commissioner James?
I'll take the vote.
Commissioner Weyland?
Yes.
Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
Mayor Beck?
Yes.
It will go, uh, it will need to go on to the next country, Sharon?
Item twenty-two, discussion slash action on a letter of agreement professional services for Olson Inc., survey and certified plaid parcels within part of block twenty-six, part of block forty-six, south Nebraska, not to exceed three thousand eight hundred dollars.
Marty Stow, construction facility manager. Um, so Olson provided this service when we, um, kind of platted the area around the Mebo, um, knowing that we had some more paint to do. Um, Dan Thompson with Olson provided that service from the go, and, uh, kind of has all the local knowledge about the area, which is very challenging to say the least. So we've been on hold, he's now the zoning administrator and the county surveyor, but also still works for Olson, and so, uh, this company, uh, wanted to run it through Olson. Um, they gave us, uh, a fee of thirty-eight hundred dollars to provide this service to, uh, carve out that area in block twenty-six and forty-six down south Nebraska City. Um, Drew, in your pocket, had kind of a map of suggested how to, how to rate that up to make it marketable. Um, I would work with Dan to kind of make those parcels the best that we can make them, um, within the agreement. Um, so I was just asked if the council's approval to provide the plating down there for this area, then we would have marketable, um, properties to sell.
Mr. Should come out of the attorney contract line?
That was, that was what I was suggesting.
I will, uh, motion to approve the letter of agreement for professional services for survey and certified plaid parcels with part of, uh, block twenty-six and part of block forty-six, south Nebraska City, not to exceed thirty-eight hundred dollars.
Commissioner, do you also approve fiscal number, um, coming out of? Line item ten forty-four, would come out of, where it would come out of, would be a attorney contract plus six.
And for those funds, the thirty-eight hundred dollars to come out of, uh, line item ten dash, dash forty-four, dash fifty-four oh three, attorney contracts, plaid services.
Thank you. Yeah. I'll say it. Motion, second, further discussion? Commissioner Weyland?
Yes.
Commissioner Soski?
Yes.
Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
Commissioner James?
Yes.
Mayor Beck?
Yes.
Item one, what? Still on to it. One parcel is still there, maybe it'll all be taken care of by the time, even. Item twenty-three, discussion slash action to approve to submit community development block grant application to Nebraska Department of Economic Development, in the amount of six hundred thousand dollars for fifth course improvement.
Marty Stow, construction facility manager. Um, so a couple meetings back, I brought this to the council for a four hundred and fifty thousand dollar ask for the CDVG grant. Um, since then, DED released that they would go up to six hundred thousand dollars on the CDVG grant, so, um, kind of went back to work and added a little bit of work to the fifth course improvement project, and we'll try to submit the full six hundred thousand to the council's approval. And what the increase was is rather than the kind of piecemeals, and the curb and gutter just to, you know, get through the project, you look at the funding that we had, um, it would be more like first course of what we have, nicer curb, better, now through the whole deal, and make it, not, a lot nicer project, so that's the difference with the addition. I'll motion to approve to submit community development block grant, CDVG application in Nebraska Department of Economic Development, for the amount of six hundred thousand dollars.
I'll say it. Motion, second, further discussion? Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
Commissioner Weyland?
Yes.
Commissioner Soski?
Yes.
Commissioner James?
Yes.
Mayor Beck?
Yes.
Our next meeting, the last meeting, the first specialty of, uh, the meeting, morning the twenty-first. That schedule will be fully up, and we actually, our next meeting followed by a city council meeting that I, I'm, so. Minutes for this, on that meeting over.
Correct. Time, please.